I'm calling to order the Planning Commission for Town of Corder Madera of October 27th, 2020. So will you please call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Here.
Thank you. We have a full commission panel. So at this point in every commission meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda tonight. If you have a public comment, you can take three minutes to speak. You'll have to raise your hand and Tracy will let you speak. But it has to be something that is not on tonight's agenda. So with that, we will open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda.
Thanks Peter. I'm checking for any raised hands. I don't see any. Alternatively, if you want to send something by email, that email address is publiccomment@tcmail.org. I don't see any raised hands and I don't have any email.
Thank you. So what we'll do then is we'll go directly to our business items. So tonight, we have two items. One is Ordinance 999. This is review and discussion of recently adopted ordinance number 999, establishing a new planning and approval process for town projects currently subject to Title 18 of the Corder Madera Municipal Code. So this is pertinent tonight because item two is the Town Hall remodel in addition. So Adam, please.
Thank you. Thank you Chairman Chase and Commissioners. I thought this is actually an item we had on the last Planning Commission agenda, but actually it may be more appropriate to do this tonight as an informational item because, as you mentioned, we will be discussing the first project that will be subject to this new review and approval process for town projects. And so members of the public, this is also maybe helpful to just clarify exactly what the commission will be doing tonight. But I really wanted to make sure that the Commissioners have an opportunity separate and apart from any project to really ask questions or make sure they understand exactly what this process is and what they will be doing, you all will be doing this evening and in the future in relation to town projects. And so just a little bit of background, this was, ordinance number 999 was introduced on September 1st, 2020 and then adopted on September 15th, 2020. And then went into effect October 16th, earlier this month. And so there were obviously a bunch of background materials that I provided in your staff report and you were all made aware of that at the time. And there was a notice of obviously about this and it went through the ordinance process back in September earlier this year. So the process was really, just to give a very brief overview, again, you have a lot of this background, but generally there were a couple of things that were challenging about the former process that we had for town projects. This really only applies to town projects that are on town property that is subject to zoning ordinance. So these are actual town-owned parcels. It doesn't relate to sort of the public right of way and things like that, but these are the projects that we've had in the past, like the Dog Park, if you recall that, that was obviously in the town-owned parcel, the Town Park. We've had other applications in the recent past. I think the Trellis structure was another example in Town Park Plaza that went through the design review process and so forth. And really, I think those, while working adequately, I think the processes in the past presented a couple of issues that we wanted to address. And one was that the process for approving that projects and those projects ended at the Planning Commission. And really were only viewed through the lens of the entitlement actions such as design review and any other use permits that might have been required, but didn't allow for the full range of considerations that really a town project may need to be, may need to be considered in that light. As we've known even through the town project process, the Town Hall project process, things like budgetary concerns and a whole host of other perceived benefits that may be appropriate. And frankly, broader perspective on, on, on sort of town projects rather than the relatively narrow lens through which design review and things like variance and use permits can often be defined through those findings and whatnot. But we thought it was important that these broader considerations be addressed and be addressed actually by the Town Council as a legislative matter, as a policy matter, which is really more appropriate for town projects and consideration of town projects. So that was one issue. And then also there was the other issue of the quasi judicial nature and sort of the shortcomings of that process when it came to potentially an appeal of a project, whether it was the Dog Park or the Trellis structure or whatnot. If there was an appeal to that, those design review permits, it would have put the town in a difficult position of not only being the applicant, but also the sort of the decision maker at the same time. So in any case, those are the two reasons why we created this, proposed the new process and the Town Council approved this new process. So essentially now we have a review and approval process for town projects that basically the intent was not to lose anything, in fact, only add more review and more opportunity for public comment and public notice and public awareness of the project. And but not lose anything that we've already had in terms of the Planning Commission's role in evaluating the appropriateness of a town project that was previously subject to the zoning resolution. So we came up with this new process that essentially revolves around what we're calling a town project report, which includes many, actually even additional things than you would have previously seen in your staff reports for an application under the zoning resolution. So it includes many of those and more information regarding that, but it's, we're calling it a town project report rather than a sort of a zoning application. And the other thing that you'll see, we're asking the Planning Commission to still do its evaluation as if it was sort of a, through the lens of land use approvals, design review, use, environmental review. But it's making now a recommendation to the Town Council and the Town Council will consider the Planning Commission's recommendation on land use matters as well as the whole host of other things that they may need to consider as part of approving a town, a town project. And so if I can, I, you know, I just, there is a, there's a whole host of slides I can get into. This just lists the, the actual information that's required as part of a town project report. And this is all listed in the actual ordinance and is in now codified in chapter eight, Title 18 of the municipal code. But essentially what it comes down to, and I'll try to, this, there's a couple of slides. This was, sorry. This is the, this was, and it says current, but this was actually the prior process which we had for town projects, which was essentially we, you know, the staff would prepare, we'd do outreach to the community. We'd do a product, project application. It would come to the Planning Director. Most of the time, actually the decision-making body would be the Planning Commission. I think there was only one town project where staff actually, which related to sort of a paint color and some changes to windows on the community center where the Planning Director made a decision. But as I mentioned before, all the other town projects really went before the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission was the final decision maker in those, in those actions unless it was appealed to the Town Council. And so that was the old process. The new process is more robust, I would say, in that, as it, as you can see, it really just shifts out the decision-making to the Town Manager and/or most, in most cases, the Town Council. And in all the stops along the way, there's required public noticing as seen in sort of the full diagram, which is here. So actually it's, this one, I believe. In any case, so there's a, I'm happy to walk through this in more detail, but really I wanted to, you know, get to the second item, but at least provide the commission with an opportunity to ask any questions or just clarifying questions about what we're doing tonight. So again, as Phil will talk to you about with the Town Hall project, you know, what the commission will be charged with this evening is considering whether to recommend, make a recommendation to the Town Council for approval. Whereas in the past, they would be actually making a decision on specific entitlements such as the design review permit, a variance of entitlement, conditional use permit. And no longer is the, is the commission going to actually be deciding whether or not it can make those findings per se. It's going to be making a recommendation to the Town Council as to whether it believes from a land use perspective and environmental review perspective that this project is able to be approved based on a review of the factors that would otherwise have been required under those entitlement applications. So with that, I will leave it unless somebody says I'm missing something entirely from the presentation, but I think I covered most of it. Again, the staff reports have a lot more information in it as well. So with that, I'll stop my presentation in, in the interest of time and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Adam. I don't know how familiar the Commissioners are with this item, so I will start with Mr. Rizzo and see if he has any questions for you guys to ask about this item.
All right. Let me make sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a few questions. So under the smaller projects, what, what is the Town Manager's limit, like spending limit before it gets kicked up to review by the Town Council? I mean, Todd's, Todd's, Todd's limit? Just, yeah. Yeah, you got it. I think that I was listening in on Town Council. I think we increased the kind of the spending limit on the projects. Is that sort of the guideline you guys are looking for? For him to be involved before it gets kicked up to the Town Council level?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a straight one-to-one. I think there could be plenty of things that are even smaller than that, but but the, such as what staff does currently, but we kick it to the, in my case, I kick it to the Planning Commission anyways. In Todd's case, he could also, at his discretion, even if it was within the spending limit, kick it to the Town Council for its review and approval. But that specific spending limit, I, I think it's, actually I don't have it in front of me. I think, Todd, I don't know if you're on the call and can actually provide that information, but if not now, we can maybe.
Yes, sir. I can jump in real quick. So my spending limit on professional services contract is $35,000 and on projects, it's up to $75,000. So that's my,
Yeah.
That would be my limit in this situation. And just as a practice though, as Adam said, any project I would, I would always take to the council.
Yeah, yeah, I, I am. I'm, I'm thinking of the future, where, you know, really, you know, you guys are doing a great job and I trust, trust you with all your decision-making right now, but you guys, we're all not always going to be here. So I was just curious, you know, in the future, if this gets handed off, what kind of changes this will, will give any Town Manager? And then also I have a question about, so there is some, obviously some discretionary review on the Planning Director level. Is, are there specific guidelines that you're going to kind of use to make that decision when you might decide to bring that to the Planning Commission level? Like,
Yeah.
You know, I'm kind of getting at like, you know, when is it, when is it appropriate to kind of bring it to more of a public forum?
Yeah. And so we, I mean, it's interesting because that discretion exists today for, you know, basically whether it's a town project or whether it's a private project. You know, and it really, we, the code is what guides us in that. The municipal code really only provides the guidance of that. The Planning Director may refer a project application to the Planning Commission in matters that are a substantial policy issue or generate significant controversy. I think it's, roughly that's the language that's used. And so it's pretty broad, but you know, generally we want to, you know, we didn't want to change any of that criteria really from what currently is the process. So we're basically keeping that same criteria and putting that, we put that into the the new ordinance for town projects. And you know, it doesn't, I basically use sort of the common sense rule on that to a certain degree. It's like, it doesn't behoove anybody to sort of have myself make a decision and especially on a town project. You know, that ultimately ends up in an appeal which, which is not at all in anyone's interest to start a process essentially in that way. So you know, anything that I, that is really viewed with, that requires, that has any sort of public interest and I would, you know, that generates public discussion and frankly has any level of controversy ends up at the Planning Commission. And part of the important part of this process is we're not losing any of the noticing provisions. So that before I would make a decision on my own currently under, and this is would be Todd as well in the future, there's a notice that goes out and says, you know, we, you know, 10 days from now, the Planning Director or the Town Manager would make a decision on this project. And it goes, there is a notice that gets published. And oftentimes what happens is we'll hear if there is, you know, if we get any comments backed up concern, that's when, before we make a decision at the staff level, it gets kicked over to the Planning Commission or in Todd's case, to the Town Council. So that's another sort of way of ensuring that, you know, that we're capturing whether or not this gets to the public bodies. And I would just say also that, you know, it's, you know, this is, this is sort of, there is some judgment there, but ultimately our jobs, we are judged on whether we're handling that process appropriately. I mean, and so, you know, my perspective, and I know Todd as well, is always like the, you know, any question, it's going to, let's have a public discussion about this in a, in a public meeting, a public or a public hearing setting. And that's, want to be transparent and open about that. So that's how I'd answer that.
Okay. And lastly, Adam, I, just a question, as we move from the, the quasi judicial process to legislative and, and reviewing policy as a type of, and we're not, as, as a commission, we're not looking at the findings any longer. Is, are you guys as a staff looking at the findings and then developing that in your new report? And then, so if there's variances or conditional uses or zoning criteria and then that way, because since we're, you know, the, the instrument that's usually reviewing those things and now we're not, and the Town Council is typically looking at policy, not necessarily hyper-focused in on, on the things that we review. Is that, is that sort of what you're thinking? Is the, the reports can be more robust and you guys are going to kind of report out on if there's discrepancies in the zoning criteria or anything like that?
Exactly. Yeah. I mean, exactly. And that's actually written into the ordinance itself so that we actually do list the entitlements that would have been, that would be required for a non-town project. And list the findings and then have an analysis about how it basically still meets those findings. Understanding though, that at the end of the day, it doesn't really, it doesn't have to meet the findings in order to be approved, unlike the quasi judicial process.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Very helpful.
Thank you, Jim. Good questions. Margaret, do you have any questions for staff regarding this issue?
Yeah. Adam, can you just give an example of a project that might have, that might go through this new process that we had previously considered through the old process?
Sure. So I mentioned too, so if you were, I think all of you, maybe, maybe Commissioner Rizzo is not on the commission at the time, but the, the Dog Park was a, was an example of one.
Okay.
And as you know, I think actually sometimes it creates a little bit of a challenging situation for the commission because people want to talk about things outside of really what the findings and the purview of what, what the commission is there to really do and review. So anyways, the Dog Park was one. I mentioned the Trellis down at the Town Park Plaza, which went through a design review process. Are there, I think we did the actual digital marquee as well was a process. So those would still go through the same process. I'm sorry, it's the same, it would make the same stops along the process and it actually would end up at the council instead of stopping at the Planning Commission. So it would have an additional stop in the process. But it would just be legislative in nature in terms of the evaluation of it.
So you're saying that those projects wouldn't have come through the Planning Commission at all?
No, in fact, they would. They, they would actually, they would go through the Planning Commission the same way they did before. It's just the Planning Commission would be making a recommendation to the Town Council rather than being the final arbiter of that project.
So would it be just a matter of money and importance that it went the other route through you and then into the Town Manager, skipping the Planning Commission entirely?
Yeah, the example of one that did not, the only one I can think of, that was a town project, again on town property that did not, we did not forward to the Planning Commission was some modifications and like, it's some paint color on one side of the community center and some modifications to windows. That was very, you know, it was just, and it was a judgment that that didn't need to go to the Planning Commission for a full review at that time. So it was really minor in nature. It's actually almost matching the paint color that was there. And so for, to go through that process felt unnecessary. Although I will say it was still noticed. So we still did the whole noticing process to neighbors before any decision was made. We got back, you know, whatever comments we got back and then it was, decision was made and then there is an appeal, there, you know, there was an appeal process that would have kicked it to the commission, but it wasn't appealed. And so.
So even though it skipped the commission, it would have been appealed to the commission? Is that what?
It could have been and under that process, which would have also created a very challenging, as I mentioned, a challenging situation under the quasi judicial process, given that town was also applicant of that, for that project. So there, but yeah, that's the only one I can think of where we actually didn't. Every other town project that we've had in the past, and I'm sure there are more, have, have gone through the, the Planning Commission.
So maybe this is, I, I don't know if this fits in here or the next discussion, but I think here, if there are not day-to-day, but maybe month-to-month decisions on the details or the design details or I don't know what, concept details that aren't huge for the new building, for the new town center. Would those skip the Planning Commission?
So there's always a, I think you're referring to, let's say it goes through the process, gets approved, and then there's some modifications to it.
Yeah, or if it's like, should the Trellis be this size or should it be some other material or something like that comes up? Would that be something that skipped the Planning Commission or doesn't?
So I, I think you're talking about changes to the, to the actual approved project at, at some point. Yeah, you know, it's, there's, there's always an allowance for some level of what we call substantial compliance. So if something's substantially compliant, we would, we wouldn't necessarily go back through the process. We use the same judgment though, in terms of whether we think it should or should not go back through the process. It's a good, I think it's a good question about whether we go back through the entire process of the Planning Commission and then the Town Council, or whether it would just go back to the Town Council for, for this final review. I think it would relate to whether it's really changes the land use evaluation that the Planning Commission had made originally and its resolution and sort of the, the, yeah, the evaluation and, and the reasons for approving the project, its first go-round. If, if, for example, the commission was focused and, and its resolution highlighted that, you know, something related to a particular portion of the design was critical for its evaluation and making its recommendation to approve a project. And that part of the project had changed in any way, you know, that, then it could go back to the Planning Commission for its reevaluation. I mean, that's typically how it's done. But there are instances where you know, small changes to projects happen and it's, it's really, you know, an evaluation of whether that's pertinent to the approvals that were granted in the first place and.
But sometimes four or five small changes make up a big one.
Understood. And in that case, we would put it back through the process. And the only question I have on that, I think you raised a good question is whether it's the Town Council, back to the Town Council or all, back, back through the, the Planning Commission as well.
I don't have anything further.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Dr. Bundy?
I thought the staff report was quite good. I have no questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Metcalf?
Ah, yes, just one question. Under the old approval process, Planning Commission was final. It only went to the council if there was an appeal. Now, if the Planning Commission is making a recommendation and the council makes the final decision, what happens if somebody appeals that the council's final determination? Since it's their project, isn't it even more complicated?
No, because once, the appeal is only part of the quasi judicial process. So once it gets to a legislative process, there is no appeal. It basically at that point becomes a challenge to the decision, a legal challenge of, of some form to the decision-making authority of the council, which I think, you know, is a, is a more difficult challenge to make frankly, because it's a policy decision and.
In fact, it's quite a lot more difficult to challenge a legislative act.
So it'd be, it would be, for example, when the council, currently we, we do this process when. So it'd be, it would be, for example, when the council, currently we do this process when we have ordinances. The hotel bonus ordinance is an example. It goes to the planning commission for recommendation and then the council is the ultimate decider, right? And so that was approved by the council. And if somebody wanted to challenge that, it would be, it wouldn't be an appeal. It would be on a different land use basis of some sort, but it would be much more difficult to challenge.
It would become a legal process then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis. I don't have any questions. I think that a lot of words have been written about this. And they're all pretty well compiled here in the staff report and between the town council meetings. And the staff report, I think it's well covered. I believe we have to open this up to public comment at this point. So Tracy, you're on to be for the raised hands watch and the email watch.
Alrighty.
So we have, if you're going to raise your hand, you have three minutes to make a public comment. I would time you from my timer here that I have in front of me and tell you when your time is up. And the email address, Tracy?
Is public comments at TCMail.org.
Okay. So are there any public commenters here tonight with their hands up?
I don't see any hands up. See one, one hand up. I think this might be Mr. Hoffmeyer. I'm gonna allow you to talk. You may have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Okay, just challenging the system once again. I mean, I hear all the political jargon, but I'm speaking for the people here. You know, obviously, this whole development process and procedure for the neighbors in the old town here is pretty disappointing for parking and traffic. You know, we feel, I mean, I'm hearing about this process and I don't, I mean, we've been to the meetings down at the rec center. We've spoken and, you know, I, we're not getting any feedback. I had all my neighbors out on the street on Willow, you know, the Maylands and, and Jan Capper and all my neighbors and we said, has anybody had any, you know, conversations with you guys about, you know, parking surveys and analysis that have been done?
I'm going to interrupt you for a second here. It sounds like you're commenting on the town hall project. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, this is regarding the ordinance nine 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 at this point in time. Adam, this is the ordinance that establishes a process for town projects currently subject to Title eighteen of the Court of American municipal code. You're welcome to comment during the town hall item.
Is that tonight?
Yes, it is following this.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I can just speak about it now or not?
No, please. We'll hit you later on. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else, Tracy?
I don't see any other hands raised. I'll come back and check again and bounce to the email very quickly. I don't see any, any emails that have come in. And no, no raised hands either.
Okay. So then I would say that we will close out this item. This is simply for our ability to air it and ask any questions about how we will participate with this process in the future. I think Adam has done a great job of explaining it and the staff report speaks for itself. If you're out there in the public realm, the staff report is available online and I encourage you to read it if you have any questions about this. So with that said, I'm going to close out item A, this ordinance number nine nine nine. And we will go to item B on the business items tonight. This is the town hall remodel in addition at three hundred Tamil Pious Drive. Review and possible recommendation to the town council to approve the town project report and initial study and mitigated negative declaration related to the proposed town hall remodel and addition project to three hundred Tamil Pious Drive. This is PL number twenty twenty dash zero zero eight three and PL twenty twenty zero zero eight four. So, Mr. Boyle, there, you have a pretty picture up and yours to handle.
Chair Chase. Chair Chase, I believe I have to recuse myself for my proximity to this project. Is that still in effect?
I believe so. Ann, do you want to weigh in on this?
How close are you to the project, please?
Yeah, it's within five hundred feet.
Oh, yes, then you should recuse yourself. Thank you for raising it.
Thank you, Jim.
And that incidentally would mean leaving the room. So I don't know what that means virtually, but perhaps turning off the video and muting yourself would be the right thing.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Boyle.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Chase and members of planning commission and members of the public. Can everybody see my screen okay there?
Yes.
All right, great. So this is a public hearing for the town hall remodel and addition project. Which many people are probably quite aware of, but just in case there are new folks listening in, I'll go over some real basics on what the project entails. Let me make sure I can get the, move the slides. There we go. Okay, so project, project overview. Project consists of two, the existing town hall consists of two levels. The new town hall will consist of two levels. The main level, the new main level will feature a public plaza, which will be approximately two thousand square feet. It will also feature a council chambers and a meeting room, which will have a seating capacity of approximately ninety-five. There will be a brand new public permitting counter, which will be on the main street level, accessible from Tamil Pious and also accessible from the elevator or stairs from behind the building in the existing parking lot. Main level will also include a lobby and public restrooms. The existing offices will be remodeled and that area is approximately fourteen hundred square feet. The lower level, proposal is to add just over three thousand square feet of offices to that lower area. A central lobby connecting both levels will be constructed as well as remodeling the existing offices that are there today. Just to give a overview of where we've been the last about two years now. In terms of public engagement, we had many, many interactions with the public in a variety of different ways. Starting way back, we formed a working group made up of members of this commission, professionals and staff and the public. That was back in early two thousand nineteen. We had three meetings with that working group. We had two townwide community workshops held in in May. When it was on a weekday, when it was a weekend. We had a smaller, designed to be smaller, meeting of just the immediate neighborhood of town hall. The Willow, Tamil Pious, Sarah and Pixie neighborhood, we had a lively discussion from that group. And then moving finally to this year, we had interactive community workshop at the community center in January of this year. And then we brought it to you, the planning commission. April twenty eighth was our first study session and then the second one was on June twenty third both of this year. So kind of just going the most recent time we've got together, you get back in June. And the information and the direction that you all gave to us after that meeting and the public gave to us was one to dig a little deeper and go a little farther into energy and sustainability analysis and how this, what type of energy requirement is going to be needed for this building and how we can make it as green and sustainable and resilient as possible. So on that end, we, we had a report commissioned by Bayren, which is the Bay Area Regional Energy Network. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in further slides. And so that, and that report was posted on the webpage quite several weeks ago and available for review. With that report, we also, we sat down and took a close look at that with the author of the, of the report as well as Mr. Peter Schwartz, who is a former planning commissioner and has commented on the project and is a real expert in terms of energy analysis. And we sat down with him via Zoom with, again, the author of Bayren, who's on this, the Bayren report, who's on this call. Ron Capier, project architect, as well as staff members, and had a great conversation with him and got some really good ideas regarding how this building is going to be the most efficient it can possibly be and the most sustainable. Another thing we heard from you folks back in June was a bike rack on the public plaza, which we've added pedestrian scale images, which we've added, both showing this, we have one from the south elevation, the southwest corner and the northwest corner. And then also we had some comments regarding stucco along, on the upper, lower, on the upper windows. And there's a general consensus that instead of having stucco and clad that, instead of plating that in those windows in cedar, as one commenter recommended, excuse me, there's general consensus that the stucco would be best just left as it is. So next. Just giving you an overview of our main level floor plan. Same as what you've seen in the past. One addition is the bike racks. We thought that was the best spot for the bike racks in the plaza at this point. But again, the main level, public counter, council chambers, main lobby and then staff offices in the old building here. So that's the general layout of the main level. And then the lower level, again, no change from, from June. This is the existing building, the lower offices, where you have the permit counters today. That will be remodeled. Just interior, very, very little extra changes to the lower end of that building. And then this is the additional administrative offices here, which will be added. Moving out towards the, towards the east, towards the fire station. Basically roof plan, as you may have recalled, early on, had quite a complex roof. We really simplified that. Two dormers facing north and one dormer facing into the plaza. Pathway and trellis leading people up from the street to the public counter area and into the main lobby. And then this, the large public plaza for gathering. And of course, as the three large redwood trees are remaining as they have always been. So that's your roof plan. South elevation, we had this done to give again more of a pedestrian scale, not the bird's eye view that we had before. Pedestrian view here, one element is the one thing that's different than this view and the other ones you're showing. We are showing the gable here and the gable here in this view, but as I showed in the roof plan, that's not the preferred, preferred one at this point is, is no gable here and no gable here. But this, so sorry for that, that confusion. This is more just to give you that sense of pedestrian scale from the south. North elevation, again, showing, again, the older roof height, one is quite larger. Again, showing that we've also brought in the stairway, the stairway was sticking out in the past. Now it's tucked into an alcove area to have much of a simpler north elevation look. Again, note, this was no change from, from June. Northeast perspective. Giving this corner, we did have a couple of different, two versions of this. We found that this is the most, the cleanest and most elegant use of the cedar siding and the windows and the stucco here. And here, as I was mentioning before, at a point, there's a comment to put cedar on these. I think we've all agreed that this cleaner, just to keep this as stucco. This is again, similar stucco material, same stucco material, just different color between these two elements here. East to west elevations. Kind of touched upon before. And then the southwest perspective, which again, we talked about quite a bit in a number of hearings and we've, we've come up with a good solution on how to enhance this corner integrated into the, the new addition at the same time. In terms of sustainability, summary of the sustainability elements. Photovoltaics on, on the flat roof. The Bayren report also indicated that it could be beneficial to add photovoltaics to these gable roofs as well. This one facing south, this one facing east. Again, preserving the redwood trees, EV charging stations in the parking lot. Bike parking in both plaza level and lower level and water efficiency landscaping also. Materials board. I've described a lot of that already. We won't go into a lot of detail of those, of that, both the north and south elevation and then materials board for east and west. We also have the actual physical materials board in Adam's office. If anyone wants to go down there and, and take a look at it and, and see what it, what it feels like, we have that available. So again, touching on the Bayren report a little bit more, the goal of that report was to determine the feasibility of creating a town hall, which is zero net energy or the zero net carbon. Purpose of the report was to provide town with alternatives that result in long-term cost and energy sustainability benefits. The conclusions reached from the report are that zero net energy is, is certainly achievable and that the added cost to do zero net energy would be recovered quite quickly, probably within the lifespan of the the equipment that in the extra, you know, energy efficient HVAC systems that would be installed. To go to zero net carbon, a little higher bar to reach, that would be a hundred percent electric building. It would have extremely high energy efficient systems and could, could also result and probably would result in fewer PV panels on the rooftop. Again, Peter Pollard, who is the author of this report, is on the line. And if we want, we can ask him for the questions at the end of my report. A parking assessment was also done. As callers and we've heard from, from many of the local residents, parking is a concern. The author of the parking assessment is also on the call, Bob Brandy from Fair and Peers. So he can answer specific questions that you have. But in general, parking counts were done middle of this month on a Tuesday and a Wednesday, pretty much all day, seven AM to nine. They were done, town hall and Pixie parking lots, Tamil Pious Drive, both north and south Willow, east side of Tamil Pious and Zero Street. So this was all assessed and I will mention, there was a public comment that came in late. I'm talking about the fire department and where those folks would park and whether they were accounted for. And yes, they were. We did a survey. We sent out a survey to all staff members, including the fire department. Do you drive to work pre-COVID? Do you drive to work and do you park in the parking lot? Second question was now, on, on the thirteenth and the fourteenth of October, are you planning on driving to work or are you going to work from home? So to get an accurate assessment as possible on employee behavior during these times. There was also comment, I also want to point out, these five parking spaces just north of the fire department building, those five parking spaces are red curved. But as you can see, I think in this picture, often they are used by fire department staff. And so those face, those spaces were not counted in this. So those are kind of extras that, that exist today. that, that exist today and will exist in the future and are under basically the, the purview of, of the fire department. There was also a comment about, or the parking on Towne-Pius Drive, right in front of, the reason I lost my cursor. Right, right in front of Towne-Pius, there is. So right in front of Town Hall on Towne-Pius Drive, there are five parking spaces here. Those, there are five that exist today, along with the existing bike path, bike lane. And when the parking assessment was done, the consultant added all the parking spaces on the lot itself, which is 33, plus the five on Towne-Pius, that gives you a total of 38. And in set, in, in the conclusion, the consultant reached was that 82% of those 38 spaces on the lot and in front of town, front of Town Hall on Towne-Pius Drive will be occupied at the completion of the project. So, or the, the capacity, the, the occupancy will be 82%. And industry standard, according to our consultant, is more like 85 to 90% occupancy. So we are below the standard for the occupancy load of our parking, based upon this analysis. And again, Bob Grandy is here if you wanted to ask him questions.
Phil, and if I, if I can just jump in real quick on that one.
Sure.
I, I would just say, you know, we, we fully understand, like, and we've mentioned this at the previous study sessions, that it's challenging during COVID, obviously, to assess parking, given changing sort of behavior of people and where they're going and what they're doing. One of the reasons why we wanted to do this, we want to at least get an assessment in of existing of parking availability throughout a typical day on our residential streets. Frankly, our residential streets, you know, there, you, you can look at this a couple of different ways, but residential streets are often, have been, and Bob can speak, speak to this, but one would expect that with more people sheltering in place and at home and not going out as much, will actually be more utilized during the day than otherwise would be. The, the converse is true of commercial areas. But it was sort of just to get a sense of what, what is actually the environment and availability of parking in a, in a variety of different streets around Town Hall today. And, and then obviously also assessing what is our needs. And we've talked about in the past, you know, this isn't about adding a significant amount of employees to the Town Hall and, to, to Town Hall. We definitely think, you know, we, this is about rightsizing the, the needed space for our public permitting center and council chambers. It doesn't really change, you know, the number of permits that are applied for out there in our town. And we get the same number of people wishing to come here. Obviously now we get much less, obviously during COVID. In, in fact, because we're, we're mostly closed. So there's a variety of different ways to parse the information, but I think what was key, and we were hearing it from people, was we need some information. And so we wanted to at least have a survey done of what's out there. So we can have, start having a conversation about parking. And, and if, you know, I think we're going to need to be flexible on this moving forward as conditions change. Maybe back to some normalcy, maybe not, but what are the options available for us? If we, do you need parking in the future? What, you know, where might we find those, et cetera? So, but as, as Phil went through pretty thoroughly, you know, the, our assumptions, and it's borne out by sort of the assessment by, by Fair and Peers, is that we, we don't think we will have the need for additional parking based on demand from, from employees and our visitors.
And just also to follow up on a, a comment that was received today. You know, this, this assessment is available online, was, was available back on Friday. The assessment also has an appendices that gives a real detailed count of each street and the parking each hour. So how many parking spaces were free on Willow during this hour? Or how many parking spaces were available on Towne-Pius? So that's, that's available for the public to look at. Okay, moving on. The secret document, you know, this, under the California Environmental Quality Act, we had to go through the secret process, just like private applicants do. We hired the consulting firm of Circle Point. They worked closely with, with staff and the project architect and prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which assessed all the potential environmental impacts of the project. Identify eight mitigation measures that will be implemented to reduce any impact to less than significant. The secret document was routed per California law for 30 days. It was routed and opened for public comment from middle of September to middle of October. We received four comments and those are attached in your staff report as well. Each comment was responded to by the consultant and staff. And a thorough, you know, assessment of each comment was, was provided. And so with that, this concludes my report. As Adam had mentioned, with this new process, what we are looking for, the planning commission this evening, is we are recommending that you take a look at all the information provided to the commission, presentations by staff and the consultants, comments from the public and other commissioners, and recommend you approve the following resolutions, which are attached to your report. The first one, recommend approval of the Town Hall project report. And the second resolution recommending approval of the secret document, which is the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. Again, that's. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much. Peter, you're on mute.
I would, I would. Yeah, and I think, sorry, I'm not on mute, but I, I would just, just to tack onto that a little bit. Obviously, we think essentially from the land use perspective and through the lens of the entitlements that otherwise would have been required under the prior process. You know, you know, essentially in looking at the findings and looking at the land use approvals, looking at the, the robust public process and all the, the sort of the pushes and pulls that we've done to sort of make this structure fit within its existing context. You know, all of those things speak to, I, I think, the appropriateness of its siding and, and design work that has been done over the last couple of years. So we've been through a lot of that in the past, so we didn't want to get, feel like it was necessary to get into a full explanation of all of those things. But those are in the staff report and obviously we're here to, to, to answer questions or, or concerns that you, you may have about that. We hear your perspective.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you very much. Adam and Phil, did you want to have either Ron or anybody from Circle Point continue with the presentation of any way before we ask for questions from the commissioners?
No, the, the folks from Circle Point are not on the line, the folks that did the secret document, but Ron Capi, our project architect is. And we've, he's, he's fine, I think, with just taking questions. I would perhaps maybe request that if we have questions regarding the Bayram Report and the traffic study, if we may maybe hit those first, because Peter Pollard from Bayram or KW Engineering is on the line. And also Bob Grandy from Fair and Peers, who did the traffic study. So perhaps we can take those for folks first, though I also understand the public may have questions for them as well.
Fair enough. All right then. So I, I will start with you, Dr. Bundy. Do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle or for Ron Capi? Or the traffic?
And why we, why we lost Bob for two seconds? We, we do have Jared and RJ Sukho from Public Works on the line as well.
Okay, yeah, I, I looked down and Bob got up and went away. So I will then go over to Margaret and ask her if she has any questions for.
My, well, my question is to Phil. And I guess I thought I knew, but now you're saying you, you're asked, the resolution is to approve the report? Is that, is that what you're asking? Just that?
That, yeah, the, the recommendation is to, is recommend approval of the report and forward it to, to the town council.
So does that mean we agree with what's in the report? Or just that it was a thorough, well-written report?
I would say both.
Both.
On balance, you have to vote for or against recommending approval of the report.
Can I, can I, sorry, and, and this is, this is a little confusing. And I think this is, speaks to the, the new process. But the report again, has a lot of information that goes beyond sort of the land use perspective on this, whether it's costs and whatnot. There is a lot of, so, so the commission's really evaluation of whether to, we can call it approve the report or refer the report to the town council. It, it should be based on whether it can, you know, those, those items such as design, the use, sort of the, the land use entitlements that it would have been evaluating the project under. And so that's really what, you know, the commission should be looking at and deciding whether to approve the report or, in other words, refer the report on to the Town Hall, to the, to the town council. And by doing so, it's essentially accepting the conclusions of the report, which as you know, at, at the end of that, there is a statement by both RJ and myself saying that we, we are recommending approval of it and for the reasons attached.
Okay, and so going back to your comment, Adam, about how the parking issues are just preliminary during the time when the Town Hall is not being used in the usual way. It, it usually is. If we were to approve the parking issue, we would be approving what? A temporary report or what?
Well, no, I think we're, we're, we're saying that essentially the, the conclusions of the Fair and Pierce Report do state that we will have adequate capacity on site, right? And even though we know that the zoning ordinance would have, would require, you know, if we were evaluating this under the requirements of the zoning ordinance, it would be more than that. We would be required to have more. But, but that's why we've done the report is really to support some of those conclusions that we still think it is appropriate with the amount of parking that we have on site. I, I would just say as a side, what I was trying to explain is that we have to recognize though, that we are in this circumstance currently and these unusual conditions. Who knows? Maybe they are more usual. It's unclear how long we'll be in this situation or whatnot, you know? So I was just making it, and also a, a sort of a comment that we are going to have to remain sort of flexible as things move into the future. Whether that's one year from now, two years, five years from now, 10 years, you know, those are things that we're going to have to consider. But currently, the assessment that was done, I think, supports the fact that we have enough parking on site and on Towne-Pius to meet the demand for this facility.
Okay, and is, is this the appropriate time for me to ask questions about parking? Or should we do that later?
Absolutely. Please.
Okay, so one of the times, many times, when I first started coming to Town Council and planning commission meetings, it was at night during controversial topics. And I don't see that there's been any parking study done, even, even imagining, not even a controversial topic, but just topics where there were a lot of different people who wanted to say things at night when it's dark and having people driving up and down the street looking for parking like I did many times. I don't think that's even been considered here. And one of the benefits of having a bigger public space for people to come and hear the goings and comings of the commissions is to have more people participating. And I don't see how there's enough parking for that. I don't think it's been considered even.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess one answer to that would be that Commissioner Vandell, there's no, with this, with this expanded building and the expanded council chambers and meeting room, there's no proposal, there's no to change the operations of Town Hall. We will still have, you know, four plant, two planning commission meetings per month and two town council meetings per month. Whether those will be largely attended or whether they're controversial or not is, will not change. And so I, I certainly see your point that the, the room will be larger and that could result, it could result in more people being in that room.
Yeah, and I would say, I think you're right. I don't think anybody's saying that there may be those, the controversial project in this location that's going to draw more people, you know, from time to time to, to this neighborhood and parking. Will, people will have to search for parking. And part of that could be more where we just try to manage where people should go and whether that's to Pixley Park and park there. But I think the, the main point is that this project isn't going to change that condition by, you know, as a result of this project. But acknowledge that there, there, there may be times where a super controversial project, a lot of people coming at nighttime, the residential streets are going to be filled because people are parked there at their houses and people will have to go elsewhere. But it doesn't change the existing sort of, this project, we, we don't feel changes the existing condition of, of that, you know, while, of, of that circumstance. And so there may, and, and I think that could be taken care of with management of, of that, like I said, directing people to where there, there, there may be parking during those times. Could be an appropriate management, parking management strategy. But I don't think it's exacerbated by, I think we're saying it's not exacerbated by this project.
One of the, this is Bob Grandy with Fair and Peers. One of the data points we do have from the survey is that the overall number of cars parked in the study area, which peaks from 10 to 11 AM on the Wednesday, drops from 180 cars at 10 to 11, down to about 130 by 7:00 PM. So we see a, a reduction and that's, that's obviously not all in the Town Hall lot itself, but we see a reduction in employee count at Town Hall. We see a reduction on some of the surrounding streets, certainly in the Pixley Lot, of demand going down. So in the overall area, there's quite a substantial drop when you hit 7:00 and 8:00 PM in the evening.
I don't know. I, I guess I'm still very leery about that because in, in just the last year, I can name a number of evening meetings that were packed in both the town council and in the planning commission. There was, and I can easily name them and I'm, you know, just off the top of my head thinking about it. And
Right, but I
I have some fear doubts about that.
Well, people were able to park and attend, I would, I would imagine. Are you just?
I, I don't, you know, I don't think it, it makes things easy or welcoming for people to participate if it makes it difficult for them to get there and be there. I find it difficult myself, from, from my point of view, when I was attending, you know, just as a layperson. I think it's a problem.
Mr. Grandy, I'm going to interrupt Margaret here and just ask you to tell us a couple of statistics here. One is how many parking spots are actually lost to the Town Hall addition? And was there not a time at which firefighters were proposed to be parking somewhere? And was there not a time at which firefighters were proposed to be parking somewhere else as a result of the work that will be done on the firehouse? So I don't know if you're aware of that, but I am curious as to how many spaces are lost to the new town hall.
Phil, you have that, right?
I think I I do have, I want to say
Three parking spaces?
Yeah, I believe it's three. Yeah.
So Margaret, you know, I mean, when you look at the fact that three spaces are lost and the function of the town hall is not different per se, that the overflow parking proximity would then go over to Pixley Park and along Pixley over there where there is quite a bit of parking. If that were the case. So not maybe not being able to park directly behind city hall or directly in front of it would allow people to park over on Pixley. That's all I wanted to address. And to Phil Boyle's commentary that the function of the town hall doesn't change at all. Anyway, please go ahead with your thoughts and questions for staff.
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bundy, are you there?
Yes.
Do you have any questions for staff regarding this report?
Yes, I did want to make a comment in regard to parking. Now, for the meetings, I'm usually there a little bit early and I noticed that Peter parks on Willow just south of Tamalpais. That usually is available that time of the evening. I usually park in that parking lot on the southwest corner of Willow and Tamalpais, the Bread and Roses building. And that seems to have adequate parking available to help with these overflow crowds. But the questions that I really had were, I didn't quite understand the sidewalk arrangement and the entrance to the west original building.
Sorry, I was muted there. The west, the original building, the no, no proposed significant changes to that access. That that door, though, I guess, I guess the main change is that door will now be a staff door and not a a public door. Currently, it is it is a public door, so that is the change. And because it becomes a staff door, if we look at the main floor plan, the new floor plan is shown here. So here's here's that new entryway.
Could you show, could you show the the west side of the building as to what that entrance actually looks like? I mean, it looked like it was trying to be not a hidden door, but concealed door. And I thought maybe it should be a door.
It will be a door and it will be less, you know, less obvious, more subtle than it is today. I think mainly just because there it is here because it's a staff door. And, you know, I don't think that, you know, the the need for to to draw the public there isn't as quite as as important.
I think I was thinking from the just the standpoint of the aesthetics and the look of the building. And then the bird's eye view with the way the entrance was going up to that, it it looked very confusing and it looked like you might be able to simplify that and put in some additional vegetation.
Okay, we can, we can certainly take a look at that and and we can certainly, you know, make that more, take a look at making that more of a a normal looking door than than what you're certainly hear that point.
Yeah, I mean, other others may feel that that looks fine that way. But the the bird's eye view looking down from above showing, you know, seemed like more sidewalk than you needed since it's not an ADA entrance or exit. I understand it's it's just a staff staff door on that. So there was one, you know, view from above looking down on that. I don't, I don't see it showing up here.
Yeah, that wasn't a previous a previous set of slides. We did have that bird's eye view, but I I took that out to do more of the pedestrian, the pedestrian view.
Okay, I just, I just thought that west end could be improved a little bit from that standpoint. Did have a question. It's listed that we still have a cool roof. When I've asked about cool roofs before, I was told they were lighter in color and more reflective. And this is described as barkwood, which, you know, looks like a very attractive color on this. Is there some reflective quality to it that gives it that cool roof designation?
I'll I'll pass that over to either Ron or or someone in the construction world.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good, Ron.
That's a good point. I think we we need to check out and see if this particular color will will function that way. We may have to lighten that color.
Okay, the the other question I had was the two by six stained cedar that you're going to have on the exterior of the building. As I looked at the palette here, it looks like that's tongue and groove. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great, great. And then the the final thought is the generator utility generators going in the utility room? Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, it looks like once it's in, it's in and you're going to have to take it apart to to get it out or to bring another one in to replace it. I, you know, I see the entrance to go underneath the deck there, but I just don't see how you're going to get that, you know, in and out or get a new one in sometime in the future.
Yeah, honestly, I think that's that's also a good point. At one time, we had a direct access from the driveway and then that got closed up over time. So we'd have to do a constructability look at at that of being able to move the the equipment hasn't been selected, but we would have to be able to move it in and out.
If I can add to that, Mr. Bundy, we have also, we're submitting a grant right now for battery backups and solar arrays for several town facilities, and this will be one of them. So that could all change should we get that grant approved. So ideally, you know, if there was no limit to funds, that's the direction we'd go. And so we're hoping this grant will help us get there.
No, I think the idea of having battery backup to work with the solar to be used at night is a great idea. I thought the studies from Bayren and the underfloor air distribution and the ideas to get to zero net energy or maybe ultimately zero net carbon once the maybe the equipment in the original building had seen its useful life. So those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bundy. Phyllis Metcalf, are you there?
I'm here.
Do you have any questions for staff or for any of the professionals?
I would like to go back to the slide that showed the parking, if you don't mind, Phil.
Sure thing.
There we go. Okay, what I was asking you about, if you look okay, Long Tamalpais, I think you said there are five spots in front of the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, there had been, and I don't remember now if it was six or seven before the previous public works director to RJ was there. Kind of like where the tree is overlapping. There was, there was at least one more spot, if not two. The bike lane hugged the curb and then swung out to be on the outside of the parking. And I'm wondering if more of the bike lane and obviously safety's a concern can be swing out and you can add one or add back the parking spots that were lost.
Yeah. RJ, I'm happy to speak to that a little bit as far as street level parking. That particular location would be challenging with the existing bike lane, but I I do see a couple opportunities. One, should we choose to modify the curb ramp at the corner of Willow? And so right at the corner of town hall, there's a potential to gain a spot there. And then sec, yeah, correct. And then secondly, if there was, you know, an observed imbalance between how parking was used on the other side versus the town hall side. And obviously, we would, we would want to fully consider the the neighborhood's uses and not, you know, negatively impact that. There's other improvements to make that crosswalk easier across, more inviting to to parking on the other end, if that was appropriate.
Okay, another thing I wanted to add, when we have known in advance that there are going to be large meetings or a big turnout, whether it's a controversy or whatever, we have actually moved the meeting to the community center. Now, the being a larger building, larger room to meet in, even though we're going to have a larger room, you know, once this remodel is done. But there's also the parking, so it's something to keep in mind. And I know I've gone to events, well, we actually had events at the community center where that parking has been filled and I've gone down this, these have been evening events. I've gone down and parked in the city hall parking lot and walked back. So the reverse can be done just as easily. But I think, you know, all in all, I like the direction we're going in. I like the changes that have been made. I I approve of both the parking study and study having to do with the heating and you know, going zero carbon, etc. I think we're definitely in the right direction. I think we've done a good job. I also like the hidden door, by the way, Bob, sorry about that. But I think it, the building looks good with it. A a door not being so obvious that it just kind of blends into the dining. That's it, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Phyllis. I do want to ask RJ and or Todd or somebody, what happened to the fire department changes where the fire parking was going to be moved at some point?
I can take that, RJ. So we moved, we moved the fire department parking to where is that? The east side of the building? This is where they park. Can you show? Can you? I don't have my cursor. Right here. So that's where the fire department personnel park now. And that that was a move we made back last year. We started focusing on parking. We realized that approximately seven to eight spaces were being taken daily by the post office staff. And we, what we did is we made two changes at that time. We worked with the post office to make sure they didn't park in our parking lot anymore. And then we moved the firefighter personnel to this side of the building. And then also, as Adam and Phil discussed, they also use the red curb parking at the top of the screen there as well. So they no longer park, you know, in our, the actual parking lot at town hall.
Got it. Okay, so it's free and clear. Thank you.
And then just one other big picture discussion outside of just the scope of this project, but related to parking. We have discussed at the staff level and it's a change that we will want to make when we get back to normal is utilizing the parking like we discussed at Town Park off of Pixley. Either, you know, directing people with signage, possibly personnel on on large meetings, improving lighting in our pathway from the park into the town hall. And so regardless of this project, that's an improvement that we're going to want to make moving forward, going into 2021.
That's great, yeah. Phil, when you guys had this conversation with Peter Schwartz, did he make a recommendation whether to go to zero net carbon or zero net?
Peter is generally in favor of zero net carbon and going as green as and efficient as one can.
If if I could jump in on that. So Peter was a great resource and and we've, we had a very productive dialogue with with him and KW. And he was pushing for a more thorough analysis that looked at kind of full lifecycle costs, which we think is a good idea. We all think the idea of, you know, the zero net energy, zero net carbon is is great. But I think to his point, doing that thorough analysis to really understand the benefits would really help with this project. And I think we're going to potentially bring something to council to authorize that additional effort.
Got it. So having consultants develop an actual Title 24 program for the building is a is a step down the road. You know, developing U factors for the windows, U factors for the roof, all of that stuff has yet to be done. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and I, and, you know, I think the thought is that this would, this effort would happen in the next, say, two to three months as we approach the the council meeting where they have a more thorough look at some of these components and decide on this phase of the project.
Okay, so are the resolutions leave this as an outstanding item for staff to resolve down the road before it ends up at council? Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I don't have any more questions. So at this point, is there no, go ahead.
Peter, if I may ask question, it's a process. The two resolutions we have shouldn't the sequel one, which is 20 dash 012, come before the other resolution? Or doesn't it make any difference?
I think, I think you're, you're, you're correct in that ultimately, when the project's approved, the sequo is has to be approved prior to actually formally deciding to approve a project. So but in this case, since it's a recommendation, it's, we weren't so concerned about it for the commission.
And they both adopted the same date, so that should be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that said, then we'll go to public comment for this item. This time, we'll open it up for a three-minute commentary by anyone who raises their hands or sends in an email to Tracy. Tracy, you can repeat the email address.
It is publiccomment@tcmmail.org.
Okay, so I think we may have at least one public commenter with a hand up or wanting to put a hand up. Is that fair to say?
It is fair to say. We have three at the moment and I'll go ahead and and unmute. You may have to also unmute yourself, Mr. Peter Hensel. Go right ahead.
Mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good enough. Okay, so I'm really upset about the fact that this parking study is coming along October 13th and 14th, you know, just 10 days before you guys are going to approve this thing. It's just ridiculous. In the last year, I've written you a lot of emails about parking and we're only now getting around to doing a parking study. And I think it's a woefully inadequate study, to tell you the truth, for a lot of reasons. One is that all the businesses up there at Old Town Square, you know, are suffering. Some are shuttered right now. Other ones are, you know, losing clientele because of the pandemic. And those people always park down, you know, on Sarah. I mean, it's so easy for them to turn, you know, make a right turn on Sarah, you know, or they park on Willow during the day. So this is not reflecting normal conditions at all. And also, you know, you're saying, well, you know, Town Park is a good place where people could also, you know, the flow could go there. But have you ever seen Town Park, you know, on a busy day now? I mean, it's just unreal. I've lived in this town for 49 years and, you know, I can remember when, you know, maybe you go down there like 10 or 15 parking spaces were were occupied. But now, I mean, people are really using the resource. So, you know, this is just very, very sketchy what you're doing here, especially because very, very sketchy what you're doing here, especially because, let me read what it says about the town, the parking variance, you know. Town code would have you plan for between 81, not town code, excuse me, building, this is state code, between 81 and 101 spaces, you're only planning for 32, you know. And, and there has to be a reason why town code or state code, you know, wants that number. I mean, it speaks to projects in the past and what's a feasible number for a public building. So you guys are 49 spaces below what you should be planning for? You know, we, we know here on Willow how parking bad parking could be, you know, and we're getting really thrown under the bus by this, and I'm very, very unhappy about it. There are some other things too that I want to say. Let's see here. Oh, yeah, Public Plaza. Okay, so you're inviting a lot of people to come here. You got 2,000 square feet. You know, it's supposed to be a hangout. You know, I mean, why have all that space unless you're inviting a lot of people? You know, you're having three electric charging stations? Okay, so people are going to be coming for that, you know, maybe just alone, you know, and they're going to be, and it's gracious plaza. I have no problem with, you know, the design. I think it's a stellar design. I really love it, you know. But this parking thing, you really need to go back and take a look at this, you know, whether the study was done, you know, in reflecting what's going to be normal, you know, as one of the commissioners, Margaret, said, you know, I mean, it's not, you know, and I'm sorry, is it three minutes probably?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay, well, that's about it, but pathetic, you know.
Thank you very much, Peter. Who else do you have? Tracy?
I have Michael. I don't have a last name, but I'm going to unmute you or allow you to talk. You may have to unmute yourself as well.
Michael Harlock. I find this process to be unwieldy. As you can see from the testimony tonight, the mitigated negative deck is, is being completely ignored. And that, I thought, was the main purpose of this hearing is to discuss the adequacy of the mitigated deck, which I did in my written comments. I have no, so to get specific, I have no idea why the notice of completion environmental document transmittal did not check fiscal impact as worthy of investigation in, in the environmental document. I can't think of anything in the COVID era that's more pertinent, particularly when we have a design that requires it to be built all at once. It is not designed to be phased, and we're having undoubtedly significantly reduced public funds. And there has never been a cost construction estimate on this highly complex building. It is not a simple building. If you look at the details of it, I feel like the environmental review should have happened back when basic site planning was being considered, because the fiscal impact of building this all at once could be a reduction of other essential public services, because once you start a building like this, you can't pause it. And why a building would be designed with no phasing, knowing or at least stated that it's going to serve for 50 years, is beyond my comprehension. And as lesser but still important, the impact aesthetics in the report were reduced to whether there is going to be escaping glare from lighting. That's the only aesthetic impact that was worthy of study when we take the most important historic corner and commit it for 50 years to a box facelift that violates zoning setbacks and has a flat roof unlike the rest of the project. It's hard for me to believe that the aesthetics in any way were adequately considered. I find the, I don't know if there's going to be another environmental study, but I feel like this has been relegated to a rubber stay-up at the end of 179-page staff report. And most, as we can see, most of the discussion has unfortunately focused on details like how many parking spaces. But the big question
Michael, time's up.
Have not been considered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa. I'm going to allow you to talk, Lisa.
Hello, this is Joe and Lisa Malin, and we live next door to the, to the Town Hall. And we have some concerns that we hope get heard. So our biggest one really is the parking, because I think it's unrealistic to think that you're increasing the size of the capacity of the building, and you're decreasing the number of parking. It's just completely unacceptable. My concern about the traffic study is it was done during the middle of COVID, when you guys are not letting public go there. There's the buildings, the current hall is the public. You have staff that are working from home. So it's unrealistic to say that that's a true sampling of what the, what the parking requirements are going to be, not to mention what Peter mentioned, that's a lot of the businesses are shut down, and the schools have been closed, so people haven't been going to their schools. The parks have basically been closed. So to say that it's an example of a sample, it's a poor time to do it. You might as well do it on a Sunday morning when everyone's asleep and say you got a good sample. I think that's very, it's not a good random sampling of what is true. I just think that's bad. And I also think that if you're going to increase the size of the building, you say it's for meetings, public meetings, but you know you're going to be increasing the staff. After, you're going to need to have more places to park, and to say that you're going to give them less parking is ridiculous. And I think that, you know, the, the problem isn't the evening meetings that you guys have been focusing on, like, because a lot of the staff are gone, there's not so many people, there's more parking spaces available. And then one commissioner mentioned that he parks across the street with the Better Roses. That's private property. If the only thing you're going to have to do is make the park be required for all employees to park down there, and then leave the rest of the parking on the site that's left over for the public who are visiting. I think that's the only way you're going to be able to make that happen. The other big issues that I have or we have is that we feel that keeping the existing building is, is foolish. That the existing building doesn't have any redeeming qualities, and that if you really took in the whole parcel, including the fire station and the existing building, you made one building on that parcel, you would get the best use out of it. It would allow for enough parking. You could really have something that fits. It's almost like you're trying to whittle a hole for the peg to fit in it, rather than making the hole in the pegs that they all fit. The problem is, you're going to spend, you may save 10 or 20% by keeping that old building that's not seismically set, it's not ADA. It's got all kinds of Title 24 energy efficiency problems, and you're going to, you're going to get 50% of what you could get with that by saving 10% rather than spending, you know, looking at a thoughtful plan that takes the whole parcel into place and make something that's really going to be the best use for the next 50 years, rather than do something that's going to buy us another 20 years and say, oh, this doesn't work, it's dysfunctional. And I, I just think that there's a lot of issues here, and I feel like just only giving us three minutes is not adequate when you guys get plenty of time just to rattle on and make us sit here for three hours, having to talk about this. So we've, we know we've said this in the past, and we just hope that our voice is being heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we have Ed next. Ed, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Good dog.
Ed, are you there?
Hit on mute. There you go.
There, there I am, sorry. Ed Conkey, 221 Willow Avenue. I have three points. One is regarding the sustainable elements. Really encouraged to hear that a lifecycle analysis may be able to be conducted. I'd really like to see the town consider what really is the state-of-the-art and carbon-neutral buildings, and that's a mass timber or cross-laminated timber building where the, not just the exterior and the finishes, but the framing of the building is, is timber. And these are becoming very common as sort of the state-of-the-art and top carbon-neutral construction, even carbon-negative. So I hope that can be considered as opposed to any steel or concrete framing that might be in the current design. I couldn't really tell from the plans. Secondly, the historical aspects. I like the design. I do wish it, it was more historical and recapturing some of the history of the area. It's sort of a gateway to the old Corvadara Town Square. You know, you could even envision a archway over Temple Pius welcoming people to the town and to the Old Town Square at the Town Hall. So something maybe a little more historical, if that were still possible. And then lastly, just regarding parking, my only comment on that is using any data collected during COVID, I think it's just completely unrealistic. The planning for a 50-year building needs to not assume anything about COVID, assume that it's going to be back to normal at some point, and those are going to be the conditions that we have to deal with, as few others have commented on. That's it.
Thank you very much.
And next, we, we have Mr. Hoffmeyer. I'll allow you to talk.
Thank you. Thanks, neighbors, Joe and Peter. Thank you, Commissioners Van Dale and Metcalf for addressing the parking and seeming to have some sense of soul for our community. You know, this whole thing has been ramrodded through, like Joe talked about. You guys have these meetings and, and are able to talk for hours where we're able to not hold any, you know, public resistance towards building a facility like this. We get three minutes down at the rec center while you're up there for hours. And let's not forget the historical aspect of Old Town. I was with old residents this week, asking them to come and speak. And you know what? They're afraid. Older residents like, like Fred and Terry, they're, they're like, you know, what's the use? And I say, you know, your, your voice means something. And you know what? People are just turned off by the whole process that you guys have gone through, this thing, as I stated. You know, we haven't, we haven't been able to protect our neighborhood here. This, this thing is so far through, it's scary. And, you know, as, as Joe mentioned, what about our privacy? You guys bought the yellow house, you know, between the Malins and the property, you know. What are you going to do for us? Are you going to put, you know, redwoods or cedars to block off this monstrosity that's going to be looking into our backyard? These were the original homes built in the community, you know, as the Old Town. So, you know, what are the assurances going to be for us? You know, think about us. We asked you from the beginning, you know, to consider, you know, putting this down at the rec center that supposedly, you know, doesn't have earthquake, you know, right building type of process. So, you know, let's, let's find out, you know, what the commissioners are, are planning, what they're going to vote on to keep this historical, to keep it, you know, the way it was meant to be. You know, I'd like to see an emergency, emergency facility go into that building, scrape it like Joe said, and you extend the fire department. You know, we're in these tough times with COVID. You guys go, go build the Town Hall down at the rec center. You guys can use, you guys can use the facility where the Petco is. I said it before, I'll say it again. There's tons of park in there. You can expand on that and do it right. Not jam it into the, to the oldest historical area in Cora Madera. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There was a hand up that went back down. I'll give that person an opportunity to raise it again if they like.
Do you have any emails that have come in?
I do not.
All right. Phil, do you have any emails that need to be read into the record? You're muted.
Yes, I have two emails that were, that I'd like to read into the record. They were both emailed today, and they were also emailed to the planning commission. First one is for Bradford Dury of 142 Willow Avenue, property owner. Titled, "The Town Hall Remodel in Addition." Comment regarding the Town Hall remodel, remodel in addition, 300 Town Pius Drive. Please do not issue a variance for the parking requirement without required, without requiring more parking spaces. The plan as proposed does not adequately address the parking requirements of a facility this large. That concludes that comment. And the other one would, the other one is, it's much longer, and I believe Tracy has it, is the one from Peter Hensel that arrived Tuesday. And I can, if you want, I can pull that up. Maybe, do you have that faster than I, Tracy?
I just want to start with the, do you have one more? I'll locate that one for you.
Okay. Just commission. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the only one I have, Tracy.
One moment. Why don't, if it's okay with you, show Chase. I have one more hand that was raised, and that I can read Peter's email into the record.
And I can, I can try to pull it up as well.
Go ahead. Hand raised.
Michelle, I've unmuted you. Go ahead and unmute yourself and talk.
Hi, Michelle Miller. I live on Temple Pius Drive. I did make some public comments, and I'm challenged by your website. I try, I've been looking, that's already, my hands have been going up and down. It's like, okay, well, it says that there's been comments on any public comments made, and I cannot find them on your website. So I just want to, the main thing that I was commenting on, I hear what everybody's saying about traffic. I'm also, I mean, about parking, I'm also concerned about traffic. And in that regard, I didn't hear any comments made tonight. In particular, I understand the daytime use with the, with the employees, and that is, it's not going to be, it's not, doesn't look like a significant impact on that, but my concern is around the planned rental of the council chambers and the public space, how that's going to be used, and that also impacts the weekends, because I live across the street, and I know that on the weekends, in regard to parking, the Temple Pius Drive is full of, all the spaces get filled up, and, and the public parking over by the park, it's filled up too. So my concern is more about the, the rental, the, the, the public use of these spaces. So I would just appreciate some comments on that. And I do appreciate the design. I feel like you've all heard us in bringing down the, the, so it's not three stories, it's two stories and all that, and I really appreciate that. But I'm still concerned about traffic and parking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. All right, are you guys ready, or is there another hand raised?
I'm, I'm ready. I've, I've located Peter Hensel's comments, and I can read those to you, and they may go longer than three minutes. Town Hall remodel, parking assessment study, questions, questions, questions. Note, this town commission study was done October 13, 14, and only made available to the planning commission on October 22nd and the public October 26th. Question, why is it, why is this vital info from the parking assessment study coming to decision-makers, planning commission, and the public? Parentheses, neighborhood stakeholders, with so little time to digest before the planning commission meeting on October 27th. From executive summary, page one, the project consists of an approximately 7,500-square-foot two-story expansion to the Cora Madera Town Hall, Town Hall off-street parking lot, including spaces on the west and east side of fire station. So he's just quoting the document, so I'll skip to his question. His question about that document is, why is the study's executive summary His question about that document is, why does the study's executive summary of future parking pressures omit the vital facts? That this is a huge expansion of the existing 4,350 square foot town hall, almost tripling present size, bringing total square footage to 11,850, include, including a public plaza, community gathering space, question mark. Why does this study omit, mention that the public plaza and the three electric charging stations will bring the citizens, citizenry to town hall like never before, creating unprecedented demand for parking in and around remodeled town hall? Next question deals with, um, talks about existing parking conditions. And the question is, why does the study omit, mention that the vehicle numbers count on the project study area we're taking at a time and business adjacent town hall square, Old Town Hall Square are either shuttered or seeing less clientele due to COVID-19? And also adjacent Cora Madera Park visitation is down for the same reason. Are we to believe that these low vehicle count numbers will stay the same when the pandemic ends? Of course not. Next question, as fire department personnel share the town hall parking lot, why are their parking needs omitted from the study? And is there, and is a quote employee survey, any reliable indication of where public employees will actually park when as individuals free to choose? The future project is complete. Recommendations, planning commission should not approve the project on October 27th or grant the requested parking variance due to one late submission of the parking assessment study, which gives insufficient time for public input. Two flaws in the study itself, which in no way comprehensive or reliable indicator of future parking demand in and around a remodeled town hall, which according to state public building code would require planning for between 81 and 101 public parking spaces rather than 32 to 33.
All right, that's it. Okay. So Tracy, does anybody else have their hand up?
I do not see any additional attendees with hands up and, um, no emails.
Okay.
Peter?
Yes.
Before we have the staff reply to some of these questions, I just wanted to remind people, and, uh, I think it was Michelle who thanked us when she spoke about not going three stories. At one point, when we discussed this in the early planning, there was discussion of part of the building being three stories with parking underneath. That would have been what the third story would be. The community didn't want that. And that's why there is less parking and there is a lower, a building of lower height. And I think people should remember that we, you know, it was discussed and was not wanted by the community, uh, the surrounding community, I should say.
Thank you for that. Uh, that's important information. So, uh, Tracy, you do not have any further hands up or, uh, emails, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we're going to close public comment then at this moment. Um, and we will take it back to staff to address some of the public comment. And, uh, I don't know, Phil or Adam, which one of you want to start out by fielding some of those comments?
I think just to get to some of the main comments were about the parking study and I'd like to address some of those. Um, you know, frankly, we've been saying all along, this is nothing new ever since March, uh, the challenges of doing a parking study, uh, during COVID. And, and then just to respond to Peter Hensel's, uh, comment about why it was done so late. One of the reasons we did that was because things had started to open up, uh, only recently. In fact, schools have just started coming back, uh, um, to in-person classes. Uh, the park facilities were just starting to be opened up. And so there was and there has been more activity in the surrounding area to at least show some semblance of quote unquote normalcy. Um, so I, you know, I think also I would be great to hear from Bob. I know we're not alone in sort of this issue, um, of trying to figure out how to assess parking, uh, during this time. But I think we should also remember, um, we may be in, the new normal may also involve the fact that, um, you know, uh, less parking demand may be a, a result as well. So it pushes and pulls. For example, we had, we now have an electronic permitting system, which, and we're going to, you know, that doesn't require people to come into the office to submit plans. So visitors to the building and planning department may be less. We have, we're not, I can pretty much guarantee you, maybe Todd can chime in, but I, I, I'm assuming we're not going to go back to just full in-person town council meetings that will still probably have some ability for people at home to actually form the meetings virtually. So, and meaning they don't have to come down to town hall. But maybe, you know, Bob, if you have a, Bob Grandy, um, if you have, um, some thoughts on this, I, I think it would be helpful for the commission and the public just to understand how, um, your thoughts around sort of the context in which parking is being analyzed.
I, well, I think where I'd like to start is that there are at least four different factors that are driving parking and some of them are pushing them up and some are pushing them down, uh, in, in the COVID era. The ones that are tended to, uh, increase parking demand in areas like around town hall are, are number, the biggest one is work from home. Uh, we see residents working from home. We also see children, uh, at home when school is not in session. The survey that we took on the 14th was actually a day in which no children were in person in the elementary classrooms in Cora Madera. So you had all of the children at home. And so the combination of parents working at home and children being at home and studying tends to drive up, uh, the parking during the day, um, during the daytime. The other thing is park use. There was a comment about, uh, the park not being used, but the, during our, uh, Wednesday 10 to 11 peak, had 93% occupancy in the Pixley parking lot. So it was definitely well-used. And, uh, uh, so we're actually saying park use up in COVID. So, uh, close to full occupancy there. The, the factors that are pushing parking demand down are retail, obviously. That comment was mentioned, although, uh, when I look at the, the occupancy on the north side of Tamalpais, uh, between, uh, Willow and Redwood, right where the, the shops are, we had 65% occupancy, um, from 10 to 11. So nine out of 14 stalls occupied. So it's, there, there is still activity going on in those areas. Uh, the other thing is town hall visitors. Uh, obviously that is down. We had about six surveyed during the peak, uh, six of our parking spaces occupied by visitors, uh, we estimate. Uh, so there is definitely some activity, uh, difficult to tell, uh, whether or not that's going to be similar to what you'll see after COVID or post-COVID. And what a lot of cities, town, city halls or town halls are going to is, is, as Adam mentioned, is more virtual permitting and doing more online. And so that's driving the demand down. Um, how much that will continue in the future is difficult to say. But I think you have this combination of factors that's, uh, some of which are driving the parking up, some of which are driving them down. And, um, uh, overall, as, as I mentioned earlier, the, the peak occupancy was, uh, for all of our spaces was about 67%. Uh, so we definitely see that, uh, particularly on Willow, which is where we saw the heaviest occupancy, particularly in that area and around Pixley Park. We see sort of the heaviest occupancy. Uh, and as earlier mentioned, that Willow south of Tamalpais is actually not as heavily occupied. Their actually occupancy levels are much lower, uh, south of Tamalpais. So I don't know if that helps in terms of providing some context.
Yeah, and, and I would just also note that the, the, the parking study also identifies some, some potential measures that could in the future reduce parking. And, and these are the management strategies that I think we have to keep in mind, given the fact that we're in sort of somewhat of a, uh, uh, you know, an ambiguous sort of state, uh, related to parking as Bob just mentioned. But there are parking management strategies that we can employ moving forward. Whether that, I think the suggestion was made for actually moving employee parking to Pixley during the day. You know, that's, that potentially is an option. We've talked about leasing, maybe we do lease space over at the Bread and Roses at certain times for additional parking, you know? And then I know Bob, in the report itself, there's other measures that typically we've seen for, for office and, and, and employee parking reduction measures, which, uh, may be helpful for, for folks to recognize our, our options as, as we start to know more of what the new normal will look like.
Well, what I, I just, this is, I just want to point out a couple of things too, just food for thought of, of, you know, there's so many moving pieces to the town and our decision-making when we think about, you know, this conversation over the next 10 to 50 years. And I'm just going to talk in a, in a five to 10-year window of some things that are in process because people and their decision-making or questions amongst our community are assuming things that aren't actually, uh, being worked on right now. And so first I want to start with what Adam talked about, our new norm as a staff, and I didn't think it was possible pre-COVID, was working from home, the ability to do it using technology. And I can tell you that having a hundred percent of our staff in our building, five days a week is just a thing of the past, it will not continue moving forward. Um, it's just, it won't. And as we handle our public meetings, we're going to, at some point, you know, and hopefully in 2021, you start to have in-person public meetings, but there will always be this technology boom now of really pushing people to use the technology in combination. Um, and so that's a factor. The other one is pre-COVID, but post-making the changes with the fire department parking and the post office issues that we had with parking. I cannot recall one day, and I was there five days a week, one day where our parking lot in the daytime was full outside of when we had people come in to do training, you know, twice a year from other agencies at town hall. It's just, it's not something that happens. Parking is always going to be an issue at a civic center. I, I totally respect it. And I also say, point out that Pixley isn't, uh, overparked at all, you know, at, at the town, at town park at, for night meetings. And that's when, you know, we have opportunities. The last piece that I want everyone to think about, there's a study going on right now, uh, with Central Mountain Fire. Um, and that study is to actually consider combining Station 13 on Paradise Drive and Station 14 right here on Tamalpais to one station. And, and, and finding a location, um, on San Clemente, potentially at the CHP site, because there may, they may be moving in the near future. And we have conversations going on at the state level, um, on what that would look like. And so that's something we're, we're very serious, seriously looking at. I think it controls cost, it helps with calls for service and response times. It also opens up this, this area as we move forward. So I just don't want people, when you talk about parking, just to assume that this lot is going to look the way it does, you know, 10 years from now, because I think there's a strong likelihood it won't. And so I just want to provide that perspective as well.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, Adam and Phil, do you guys want to keep responding to some of the commentary?
Yeah.
Sure.
And, and maybe, I, I think there were a couple of, um, comments from Michael Harlock. I, you know, I was trying to understand if he was just trying to make the point of whether or not fiscal impact should be analyzed as part of the environmental analysis. Um, you know, and I, I've gone through the SEQUA checklist. Fiscal impact is not part of, uh, an environmental analysis. That's obviously an important part of what the council is going to be and, and Todd here, who's here. And we've all been talking about for the last year on this, but, um, as part of a SEQUA document, that's not something that is typically analyzed. Um, and, and to that point, um, on the SEQUA document as well, um, you know, our obligation is really to provide, uh, the environmental impacts as required by the state law. And that's, that's exactly what we've done. Um, aesthetics is required to be analyzed in a certain way under SEQUO. We obviously, and, and we've done that. And, and we've obviously, um, think about aesthetics, um, through the design process, totally different. And that's opened up and we can talk, uh, as much as we want about whether or not we think aesthetically this is a good design or, or what have you. But from an environmental perspective, uh, the questions that you need to, uh, we, we need to analyze and ask ourselves is very different than what you might think of a typical aesthetic analysis. There was a, and Phil, maybe you can go into this a little bit, but like a historical cultural resources, um, assessment done on the existing, uh, town, town hall building.
Yes, there was.
Go ahead, Phil, yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, I, I'll just add into that. Um, like, um, there was a, a historic evaluation done for, as part of the initial study that's included in, in the document. Um, they did conclude that, uh, the historical significance of Old Town Hall was significantly changed and modified and compromised when it went from a fire station to, uh, a town hall. Um, so, you know, the look of the building, you know, changed dramatically. And, and so now, and that was done in the mid 60s. And the, the report also concluded that the, it did not feel that the, this addition to the Old Town Hall would, would significantly compromise, um, the, the 1966 version of town hall, which is what we have today. Uh, Michael did point out aesthetics, um, aesthetics was fully evaluated. He mentions that there is only one aesthetic, um, comment. And I think what, to clarify, there's, there's only one aesthetic mitigation measure that was proposed to reduce impact to lesser significant. And, and that mitigation measure is dealing with, um, dark sky and nighttime lighting. And so aesthetics was assessed, um, and one mitigation measure was, um, proposed in that document. Um, back to Adam talking a little bit about fiscal impact. If one looks at attachment seven, um, that is the comments, uh, and the responses from the consultant regarding comments submitted, including the comments from Mr. Harlock and where they talk about, um, fiscal impacts. And as Adam said, it's not a, um, a direct, you know, SEQUA impact that is assessed. But the consultant good does go on to say that should the project change as a result of project funding or in the way in which it is constructed, um, you know, whether it's phased or not phased, if that changes over time. And then we will certainly look at that and phasing results in an environmental impact, either positive or negative, that will be addressed. Um, but at this point, you know, the project is not proposed to be phased. So that's, that I think covers, covers those.
And I'm happy if, even though I know it might not be the purview of the, of the planning commission and your decision-making regarding fiscal impact, but I'm, I'm also happy if the commission would like to give an overview of where we are fiscally. And, uh, there are many options. We're, we're actually probably the, I can say, at least in this county and Sonoma County, um, we weathered the storm originally. We anticipated through COVID a $5.2 million deficit over two years. And what happened is last fiscal year, we ended up, we called it a deficit because we took a million dollars and put it to our pension trust. But if you step back and look at how we ended our revenue to expenditure, um, comparison last fiscal year, we had a surplus of 700,000. This year, um, we're looking at something similar. And the reason why is our 25 top sales tax earners, uh, were able to weather the storm and be creative through, uh, through the closing of some of the businesses of how they handled themselves. And so what I'll tell everyone is that we, nothing's changed on our plans and, and we don't need to phase this. We would strategically do it over two to three fiscal years, the timing of the project. Um, and, and also provide options to council to finance a small portion of that. But, uh, from a financial standpoint, which will be the council's decision and go to them, uh, staff, um, nothing's changed between pre-COVID to right now, as crazy as that may sound. And so, um, I appreciate the concerns, uh, but we have a plan and I look forward to, you know, sharing that with the council and the community when we get to that point.
Yeah. And I think there were also may have been a comment about project, um, uh, construction cost estimates from, from Mr. Harlock. And so I don't know if RJ, we had a section on page 10 of the staff report that we included in there, but we have done some cost estimating, uh, in fact, a couple of times, most recently, uh, after our last meeting. That was one of the things that I think the commission, uh, wants us to do. We, we're not focused on it, obviously, that's now that the project's going to go before the town council and, and have a discussion with Todd, I think, you know, um, which Todd just outlined, the, the sort of the, the plan for that. We're not focused on that as part of the conversation with the planning commission, but that is clearly front and center is something that we're focused on and understand the need, to really hone in on what this project costs and drive down the cost to the extent we can. And that factors into it, frankly, a lot of the energy savings, lifecycle cost analysis as well. Um, and how we're going to, you know, what makes the most sense, piecing those things together.
I just want to say, I'm just proud of staff, I mean, and working with the commission and the team. You know, this, I, I think the, the statement was this is being ramrodded through and I don't, I'm not, I couldn't be more proud of the process. You know, this, I, I think the, the statement was this is being ramrodded through. And I don't, I'm not, I couldn't be more proud of the process of the town going through and, and having the discussion. I mean, this, this peaked at ten million and it was a three-story project. And you know, I, I think what we have here is, is listening to the community and what makes sense and being fiscally prudent. Um, you know, this is, we've been able to, I think, reduce it by a million to a million and a half down. And, and that's important. And so, you know, keeping the current, I appreciate Joe's comments, but you know, this to get to yes, and what does success look like for Corte Madera, I think this is the best version, and I'm just proud of it. And I think the staff has been very fiscally prudent uh in that decision-making process.
All right. Phil and Adam, is there anything you want to add before we get to uh commission commentary?
No, I would say, you know, traffic, um, from a SEQUA standpoint, you know, that is analyzed as well, and that, that was raised. But you know, really the increase in volume of uh basically from what we have today, and I, I always have to qualify that today or pre-COVID to what we're proposing here, both in terms of, you know, again, the fact that we're, we're not increasing employees uh by, you know, a very small percentage, and that would be maybe phased over time. We're talking like, I think we analyze four or five employees over the fifty-year period or whatnot. Um, the fact that you know, the functions of the facility aren't really changing. We're just providing the right amount of space for the current functions that we actually provide at Town Hall. Uh, you know, the, the, and the, the analysis concluded that essentially the additional, and, and under SEQUO, the additional um trips were so low that it screened out of really requiring a full uh traffic analysis because it really wasn't generating um, a, a lot of uh new trips to the site or from the site. And, you know, uh, so I just will say that, that's not to say that traffic is obviously is, is important, and traffic is something that we focus on with all the projects that we have. Uh, but I think compared to, uh, you know, I think it, you know, it, it is somewhat counterintuitive. I mean, here's a new building, but it's not a traffic generator, the way that a new commercial building or new office building and some of the other projects we've seen um constructed uh recently are. Uh, and so I will just leave it at that. Uh, on that.
I would like to um go back over and ask a couple of questions of staff or Todd, as the case may be. Um, Michelle Miller commented and said, uh, she wanted to know more about the rental of chambers. And I recall that this was addressed during a public meeting. Who would like to field that question?
You know, I think we've envisioned that the community, uh, as the council chambers, and we're not calling it a community center, we have a community center, but the council chambers was would act as a flexible space for local groups to meet uh, uh, on occasion and could be potentially rented um from time to time. I, I don't know if we've solidified a actual you know, a, a operating proposal for that. It's obviously something that we'll have to develop. We're not that far along in the process to, to sort of nail that down. Other than to say, I think we would um be acutely aware of, of the peak demand and avoid those peak traffic times or uh peak parking demand times with which to, you know, so to avoid drawing additional people uh to the, the facility during that time. And, and, you know, uh, so that's, that's essentially, those things could be conditions of where ob- obviously we uh limit hours of the amount of time that we actually um rent during a, during any week, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And that would just be based on demand management with, with some sense of whether those things are creating traffic or parking issues in the neighborhood.
Right.
Or, or noise, but.
And, and I'd just, just like to briefly point out that, you know, Town Hall, pre-COVID Town Hall, um, where the, the council chambers was used for training and other um, um activities um outside of town business. So um, we don't see a dramatic change in that either.
One of the questions has to do with future staffing. And I recall, Todd, that there was a, a projection of future staffing that went out several years. And I was surprised when I read it that it's like one or two or three employees over several years that would increase. You can enlighten.
Yeah, it's, it's the way the town is, is set up and the service delivery that we, um, we deliver. And we actually forecast out uh at least ten years on, on that service delivery model. Um, and really, it, it's very limited. We continue to restructure our staff a little bit. Possibly adding staff to our, our building department moving forward. Um, but really, when you look at the core departments of admin, finance, planning, building, there's not, you can, it's, it's pretty easy to look at the delivery and follow the budget that there are no anticipated really additions uh to the current staff levels where we may see it over the next twenty years would be on the public works maintenance side. Depending on a number of factors. Um, also, what I, what I see moving forward over the next two decades is sharing and consolidating our services further, whether it be in the Parks and Rec area or um amongst some of our administrative staff, you know, a building official, sharing a finance director. So I, I don't see governments our size, you know, there's a fine line between a, a government of a population of fifty thousand and larger and a population of, you know, less than that, twenty-five thousand less. Um, and so those of us that are smaller um to survive and continue those services will have to be creative moving forward. So I don't see us growing much more. Um, I see us actually maintaining those levels and in some cases, reducing uh the levels.
Yeah, well, thank you. Um, so there's a head count that you have now, and there's a head count that the building would accommodate.
But it goes from twenty-four to thirty, I think it was. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, add, add five to six.
And, and I, I, again, we saw one of the things that excites us. I don't see our staff actually growing. Again, it would be a, as an opportunity to take an entire department from one of our neighboring jurisdictions and having this facility and being able to, you know, expand resources to two communities and share personnel amongst two communities. So I really don't see, um, even though I, I saw that number and we've done the analysis, that's a very, very aggressive number. So it will not be more than that. And I'd be shocked if it was that number, if it grew from twenty-four to thirty.
And, and some of that is, you want to, for the environmental analysis, actually show the conservative estimate of actually it may expand that much. So you can actually analyze how many more part trips that would generate and stuff like that from an environmental perspective. But uh, it's sometimes called the worst-case scenario uh from an environmental standpoint. So that's why it's up, we, we wanted to at least incorporate that number. Um, but as Todd said, it, you know, that it's, it's not projected in the near term at the very least, you know, it's.
And again, just one last thing not to beat it, but uh, a dead horse, but so to speak, but it, it would be like part-time personnel. We could see that growing a little bit. Um, and so that would be, you know, one factor that we'd want to consider, that we have considered.
Thank you for that. Um, I would like to hear, uh, what is this? Uh, we, we need to address Peter Hensel's commentary about state code requiring eighty-one to eighty-two parking spaces. I've never had a problem parking at uh Town Hall at, at any time. So I don't know how that comes into play here. I just, I just don't understand.
No, and I, yeah, I'm not, I haven't heard that standard. And we do have a zoning standard that we've used in, in the past staff reports. And Phil, you can pull that out. But I, you know, I think a big advantage we have with sort of assessing parking for this project compared to any other project that would be new is that we, we had a condition already. We had an existing condition that was really quite, you know, uh, it was pretty indicative of what we can expect going forward with a, with the additional few spaces. And that's what I think um, additional demand of a few spaces, which is exactly what Bob Grandy's, I think, report shows as well. Um, uh, and Ferrin Pierce, I should say, their, their report states. And so we, you, you know, it, I think that's the best indicator of of the parking need and demand is, is how we were operating um pre-COVID. And, and Phil, I don't know, the, the zoning, there is, this is important to recognize that the zoning would require significantly more, and we're not providing. But again, that was the reason for going through the parking assessment as well.
Right, the, the, yeah, the Corte Madera zoning code requires um between um one space for two hundred square feet of uh building area. And, but it, it also delineates, you know, it says public buildings, and then it also says one space for two hundred and fifty square feet of um of office buildings. And so, you know, we're, we're obviously a public building, but we're also an office building. And yes, as Adam says, we would not meet um per the letter of the code, uh, the number of parking spaces per the zoning ordinance. But in, in many other instances, um, that, that's the case.
Do you have the, the number? What, what, what was the zoning requirement, Phil? Do you remember?
Let me see if I could pull it up here. The older staff report.
And, yeah, and I, and I think, um, I think the last comment I would make, I, I know we're talking about, we're down to parking and we, there are some comments about moving the project. You know, I think the commission is aware, and I think many members of the public are aware of how there's a lot of process, a lot of discussions that got us to this point. And so I think Phyllis raised, Commissioner Metcalf raised a good point about where we were and how we got here. And it's important to recognize and remember that context as we discuss where we are now and, and what we're down to here. So that's all.
And yeah, just, just pulling up that old staff report and using the, the, the Town Hall and the fire station together, both those buildings and their total square footage, our, our delta will be short, um, you know, be- between forty-five and, and seventy parking spaces if we were trying to, to meet the actual code for, per the letter of the code.
Okay. Um, well, I think it's time to start in with the commissioner uh commentary. Uh, uh, I'll start with you, Margaret. Um, are you ready to uh?
Peter, excuse me, may we take a five-minute break, please? I know it's late, but sitting here since seven o'clock, I'd really like to stand up and stretch.
Okay. If anybody else have that same request, I'm sure there is.
Good idea.
That's a good idea.
All right, five-minute break.
Thank you.
So at this point then, let's um move into commissioner uh commentary on this uh i- item. So I will uh go ahead and start with you, Margaret.
You know, it's very difficult because when you read the first um line of the entire of the report that was done, and it struck me last uh meeting also when we discussed this, that this is supposed to be a project for um the minimum of the next fifty years. And um it's, I take that seriously because I've been here thirty years. So you know, that's more than half the time this project is supposed to last. And I'm torn because, you know, Adam and Todd are right, we don't know what's going to happen, and things will be very different. On the other hand, I have experienced a bad traffic study when um Marin Country Day School and Robbins Drive and the, the Montessori school wanted to expand, they did the traffic study in June. Just a school was ending. And they said, oh, it's not going to be much different when school starts. Well, I have to drive into that traffic, or I did before COVID started every morning, and the backup on Prince Royal Drive was seven or eight cars long trying to get through the traffic of the parents driving their kids to school. And it was because the study was done at a time when school was winding down. And so here we have the same thing happening. Everyone is saying things won't change that much during uh, when COVID is over, it won't be more used or less used, or there'll be different uses. And I don't think that, I, I think the people who live nearby and who are concerned about that have, have some pretty serious concerns about how their neighborhood is going to be affected by it. And I think I think we have to pay more attention to the parking issues that have been brought up because, in my opinion, I think they're a lot more serious, plus the fact that you know, I'm a single woman. I don't think I feel very good walking from town, the Town Hall entrance deep into the Pixley or, or to the park, the park parking lot, there, there isn't good lighting there. And uh, it's a lonely sort of area at night. I don't feel good about walking into that parking lot. And I think that's a big consideration for people coming to meetings also. And so I think that's where my concerns lie. I think the building is as nice as it could possibly be for the space. And um, I think you know, there are always things that individual taste would change. Um, and I certainly would. I think it's terrific that the uh the environmental concerns and the zero energy is going to be uh considered. And I think considering it's going for the next fifty to seventy years, we ought to look at zero uh energy or whatever the uh call it the gold plan is because I think that would serve the future better than any of the other plans. And I really uh think that's important looking ahead. You know, but I think that, that the neighborhood has some uh pretty serious concerns, as do I. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Bundy.
So I, I think um this has evolved into a very attractive um aesthetically pleasing uh project that could serve the needs of the town and the town staff very well going forward. Uh, so like Margaret, and uh, I, I also thought a lot about the traffic and looked at the, at the traffic issues and reflected that in all the times that I've been going to town council meetings and uh Town Hall during the day, I've always been able to find a parking spot. The parking lot has never really been full. And those evenings at, when there's a town council or planning commission meeting, I think that, that is a problem. Uh, but I think some of the things going forward are going to be different. I think even before COVID with the video, uh, more people would stay home unless they had to get there and speak specifically to an issue. And it also allowed when two items were on the agenda or several items were on the town council agenda, uh, people could come down to the meeting when their item was going to be uh heard. So this was even before COVID, and COVID has accelerated uh this electronic filing of permits. Uh, to a great extent, as I understand it, that was already in the works, but it's really been enhanced. And I also reflect on some of the uh meetings that I've attended on uh the future of traffic and parking. And so there's a lot of belief that autonomous vehicles are going to change that to a great extent. And that, that uh certainly may happen. But I think just a lot of uh what we're doing with uh working from home, uh, being able to file things electronically will change the actual needs for parking places going forward is what's going to be recommended or what's going to be required. And I think if the Town of Corte Madera will continue to be on the cutting edge of being able to uh limit the requirement to come down and do something in person or to be in the office in person and be able to work from home, I think the parking situation will not be a major impediment uh to this, yeah, being a part of the community. I think the biggest problem we have with traffic and parking is a post office. I think the biggest problem we have with traffic and parking is a post office. So I, I can recommend, the negative declaration, I can recommend this going to the town council.
Thank you very much, Bob. Um, Phyllis.
I, you know, we've worked on this for a couple of years now, and it has evolved. And it's evolved into an attractive-looking building that's going to serve its purpose. It's got, you know, it is functional. As far as, uh, traffic and parking goes, they're not the same thing as, or I'm concerned. And I think the problem we have is parking, not the traffic part. And as far as the parking goes, if there was ever, you know, if there was a big meeting, and I think we should call that room an all-purpose meeting room and stop using the word community because it confuses people as to the community center. But if we were having a meeting in that room and we expected a lot of people, you know, that might happen twice a year, we could encourage people to park at the park and run a shuttle. If there were, and I mean, I don't mind walking from the park to, uh, the town hall parking lot or back. I walk along Tamalpais. I don't walk through the park in the dark. There's enough traffic and lights on the main street that I feel safe. But I mean, if this concerns people, it's something to look at. I mean, Todd has said, and Adam has talked about the fact that not everybody's gonna be there every day. That's gonna make a difference in what, you know, parking is available. And as I said earlier, a compromise was made. Neighbors did not want a three-story building, though it became a two-story building. And there isn't that, um, semi-underground parking that would have allowed far more parking spaces. I mean, I have no problem, uh, sending the two resolutions forward and supporting each of them. I think all in all, staff, the consultants, the architect have done an excellent job. And there has been an awful lot of community input over the past couple of years. I don't think there is much more that could be done and doesn't serve a purpose to even try.
Thank you, Phyllis. I appreciate that. For my part, um, I would agree with, uh, the commentary on balance. I think that, um, the comments about the architecture are, uh, uh, let me just say that I've been involved with this since the very beginning in January or February of twenty nineteen. And it's taken a year and a half for this to get where it is. So that is not ramrodding this through. It is a slow, thoughtful process that has occurred. And, um, um, it's, it's gotten to a place where the building is, uh, functional, quite attractive. And I think it will carry for the duration of the fifty-year timeline that is needed. And let's hope for longer. You know, regarding Mr. Harlock's comment about phasing, um, I think that phasing the project would add to the cost of the building uh, to draw it out. Um, in my experience, it's better if you can go build it all at once, unless you're just hamstrung. I think that, um, the staff and Ron have done a great job of bringing this to fruition. And, um, I would, uh, uh, support the, uh, recommendation for, uh, the negative deck and, uh, also for the report as a whole. So rather than, uh, continue on, uh, past my three minutes, I will, uh, say let's, uh, take some votes on this unless somebody else has, if somebody else they would like to add. Seeing none. We have a, any motions here for the mid, I guess, well, we can start with the first, the, uh, report, uh, resolution. Number twenty oh dash zero one one.
Would you like to do them both together, Peter?
I think we could do that. We're not, uh, approving this. We could do them both.
Okay. I'll make the motion then. That, uh, resolution two zero dash zero one one in the matter of recommendation by the planning commission to the Town of Corredera Town Council to review and accept the town project report for the town hall remodel and addition project to three hundred Tamalpais Drive to renovate the existing facility and add a new council chamber. I will call it, I don't like community room, as I said, I'll change that to an all-purpose meeting room, public permitting center and administrative offices, as well as upgrade the entire facility to meet current building seismic and fire codes. In addition to that, I move resolution twenty dash zero one two in the matter of recommendation to the Town of Corredera Town Council for approval of a resolution certifying an initial study and mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan for the town hall remodel and addition project to three hundred Tamalpais Drive submitted by the Town of Corredera to renovate the existing facility and a new all-purpose meeting room, council chambers, public permitting center and administrative offices, as well as upgrade the entire facility. And I think it should be to meet current building seismic and fire codes, not of meet.
Correct.
I'll second that.
That's great.
So can we split our vote or we can't? We have to vote the both of them at once?
Well, we don't have to, but I think that's how the motion was prepared.
Okay, all right.
Something, Margaret, I would have separated them as two motions. I'm sorry.
You can still do that, or, um,
I don't wanna read them all over again.
Or you, or you, or, um, you could move Commissioner Bando, you could move to amend the motion to break up the two resolutions.
Well, it, I don't think it matters. I'd probably be in the minority anyway.
Okay, I, I will, we have a second from Commissioner Bundy. Um, I will start calling the roll. Uh, Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Mr. Bando.
No.
Vice Chair Metcalf.
Yes.
And Chairman Chase.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Obviously, as we know now, uh, no appeal rights need to be called on this because it's a recommendation. Next stop, we'll, we'll take this to the town council and obviously you're very much informed on the process going forward.
Thank you very much. Okay. That's, uh, an important piece of business behind us here. We have five minutes before we have to, four minutes before we have to vote to continue past ten o'clock. Uh, commissioners, uh, does anybody have any?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Peter, and I know you're gonna get something. I just wanna thank the commission for their thoughtful deliberation on this project. I know you had a lot to consider and I think, um, also significantly aided the process and public review of this. So, uh, thank you for your, your comments and, and helping make this project a, a better project.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for that. That's, that's important. Who had the last public, uh, town council meeting, uh, assignment?
I had the, uh, last one, uh, from a week ago. The ten, ten twenty.
I had the one before that.
Okay.
Which I don't remember the date of.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bando.
Um, you know, since that, that meeting, uh, the, the, the big focus was on this, um, project between the state and the county to buy a hotel over near, uh, Marin Joe's and, uh, renovate it or turn it into a homeless housing. I think the, uh, project name is Turnkey.
Home Key.
Home Key. And, um, I, I guess the big problem with that particular hearing was that, and the people who spoke from Home Key actually admitted it. And I thought it was tremendous liability admitted on their part, that they hadn't properly noticed any of the public of the, uh, of the meeting. And people, uh, the public stood up at the meeting and said, we weren't noticed, uh, properly. And, um, it, I don't think it was Corredera's fault because it's not a project, it's only buying a piece of, uh, property in the town of Corredera, uh, that the county and the state were getting together on. However, people were very upset. And I think rightfully so, because it was gonna affect them directly and around there. But the explanation of the project itself was very interesting. And, um, anybody who's interested in, um, services for the homeless ought to look into the project or get involved with it because it really was a fascinating kind of project. And I think, um, you know, had they done it properly, it, it might have gone over a lot better. That was, that was about it for that meeting.
Okay, the meeting on, uh, ten twenty, uh, PG&E representative, uh, Mark Van Gorder talked about how they're gonna do the shut-offs and how they're trying to selectively do that and what they're, what they're doing in relationship to turning it back on and such. And, uh, Todd, uh, talked about, uh, a, uh, code enforcement position with, uh, communications. So this would enlarge the code enforcement, uh, beyond, uh, Michael Moriarty. Uh, to a certain extent, and Michael, I think, would take a slightly, uh, advanced role in that. Uh, and then the other, uh, discussion, uh, was trying to do sidewalk, uh, improvement projects, uh, where sidewalks currently exist in various neighborhoods, uh, where there'd be more or less a fifty-fifty cost sharing with the homeowners to either replace or grind sidewalks to eliminate, uh, trip hazards and improve pedestrian safety. And that was about it.
Very, uh, informative about that, Bob. Um, we have ten o'clock and we have to take a vote. If we're gonna continue for fifteen minutes, we have to have the majority of that. So, um, we can take a voice vote here, uh, Commissioner, uh, Rizzo.
Um, yeah, I'll continue.
Okay. Commissioner Bando.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Okay, Phyllis.
Yes.
Okay, myself is yes. So we'll continue for another fifteen minutes here. Uh, so at this point, uh, Adam, it's your job to report.
I do, I hate to disappoint you tonight, but, uh, uh, I, I don't have too many reports um, or, or actually much to report on right now. Um, so I'd rather, um, move on to the minutes if, if that's okay with you. Um, I, I will say, I, we will have, um, you know, I have received some emails just to acknowledge that, um, from Commissioner Bundy, just regarding future agenda items. So, uh, I will, um, at the next opportunity, put those on for a discussion about having those on the agenda to, um, discuss informational items.
Okay, um, I was trying to recall the other, uh, items that have been requested to go on agenda. You've got those somewhere in your hat.
I would, I would just, yeah, again, request, uh, that they just shoot me an email and, and the only ones I've received are from Bob at this point.
Okay. Bob, you have it on your hand up first.
Uh, yeah, one of the things that, uh, I think we discussed or wanted to, uh, put on the agenda was the idea of, uh, are we going to change the, uh, uh, working hours for construction uh, for all projects going forward, rather than just the individual project we voted on last time?
Yeah, and, and again, just, I wanna try to follow the process as, as much as possible. So I, I'd like to, send me a, a note about what, what it is to consider and, and we can put those on a list of future agenda items. And then the commission and staff can go over sort of maybe, uh, agendizing over a period of time when to discuss these things. Because I think the, the point, part of the point of putting them on the future agenda items to be discussed, kind of the way that the coun- council does, is to sort of have a conversation about timing and capacity and those sorts of things as well. So, that's, but, but definitely, Bob, I've gotten your emails. And so that gives me now the next commission meeting we have. I, you will see under the future agenda items section of the, uh, agenda, those items to discuss.
Great.
All right, so.
Uh, yes, I've been discussing with Adam. I've put together something having to do with outside lighting. And, um, did a lot of research for a lot of things together. I knew how busy he was working on things. And I certainly, this is my busy time of year, being, uh, political strategist. So I will get it to him, but everything is prepared. It's basically just putting together a cover note, so he follows through. I would like to add one more thing to what Margaret talked about with the, uh, Home Key process. The problem was not the outside groups that will be handling it. The problem is the county that handled it so badly. And today during the Todd and Eli show, Dennis Redoni was there. And I took it upon myself, since I'm no longer an elected official, I'm free to say what I want, to tell them what I thought about how the county had handled it and how they had taken a project that could be positive and, you know, helping those who are the most vulnerable among us and made it into a controversy that was unnecessary. Dennis was not too happy. Adam was there. He heard it. Todd heard it. They kinda put their heads down as I said what I thought.
It's coming back to us, I'm sure. Okay.
What I say, oh, well, it doesn't come to us as a planning commission. And I spoke as an individual and, uh, somebody wants to tell you what I said, they're welcome to. I didn't swear.
You're muted.
It will be on, um, video on YouTube tomorrow, Phyllis. You can, I think we're uploading all that, so.
What I said to him?
It will be uploaded on YouTube. So anybody who wants to watch it can, can watch it at their, in their home with a glass of wine.
Okay, well, somebody had to say it. So I took it upon myself to do it.
You were very articulate and direct.
Todd had to keep his head down.
I did. I don't wanna be on the wrong end of that ever, please.
This is required.
I've been out of office long enough. Uh, the statute of limitations has passed on anything I may have done. I can be myself and say what I think.
And this is required viewing, right?
You're gonna be very disappointed, Peter.
Nah, I doubt it. Um, Adam, what do you have for our November tenth meeting?
At this point, we, we don't have, uh, any items. But that obviously can change. And, and I know, yeah, I'll just, I'll just leave it there. We have a lot of other things, um, related to the project you were just talking about on the, on the calendar before then. But we don't have anything at this moment, so.
Okay. So, um, one of, the only other thing that we have to, go ahead.
They, uh, we're, we're planning on canceling the, the planning commission meeting and meeting that would be the week of Thanksgiving. Obviously, that's, even during COVID, I imagine that's still not a good time to, uh, have a meeting. Although if nobody's having an actual Thanksgiving with, uh, a bunch of family members, maybe we should all get together on, on Thanksgiving and have, I don't know.
We could have a virtual Thanksgiving. How's that?
Well, we'll all meet at Pixley Park.
All right.
Okay, um, so then, uh, the meeting minutes for September twenty-second are the only thing left on our. uh the meeting minutes for September twenty second are the only thing left on our agenda tonight.
I'll move those minutes.
Second.
All in favor.
Okay, let's uh end this meeting. So with that said, I would say good night to you all and we'll close out the meeting.
All right.
Good night, Peter.
Thank you.